Excuse me, please. We're gonna start in a few minutes, okay?
I now call this meeting of the committee to hold an order at 5:00. I can't read the clock. 5:32 PM. Please call the roll.
Ms. Pearson?
Present.
Mr. Owens?
Here.
Ms. McCall?
Present.
Mrs. McCulloch? Mr. Segal?
Here.
Ms. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
We'll now take a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we go any further, thank you to Kathy Bayer Everly and welcome Kim Peterson, who are working behind the scenes to produce the board's broadcast via YouTube livestream and Comcast Channel 20. I also wish to welcome Superintendent Student Advisory Council Representative Brooklyn Pierre from Guilford High School. I just want to remind everyone to please hold your questions until after the presentations. Meeting minutes. Meeting minutes of March 7, 2023. Are there any changes, corrections, or additions to the meeting minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pearson? Okay. If not, is there consensus to approve? Thank you. Ms. Pearson will now lead the Internal/External Stakeholders Committee portion of the meeting.
Thank you. So first, our stakeholder 12-month agenda. We show this calendar at each committee of the whole to remind everyone of the agenda of this stakeholder committee for the month ahead. Tonight, Dr. Jared will lead us in a discussion about the stakeholders' calendar, and Dr. Reed will give us an update about affinity groups for our families, students, and staff. But first, we will begin by celebrating the good things happening in RPS 205. This year, for All-City Choir, students from Auburn, East, Guilford, and Jefferson traveled to the Milwaukee High School of the Arts. Our students attended workshops, collaborated with Milwaukee's choir students, and were instructed by the school's core director. Let's listen to a portion of the performance. That was nice. We recognize all of the nominees for Golden Apple at January Board Meeting, but we want to extend a special congratulations to our three winners. Mallory Sage, third-grade teacher at Whitehead; Emily Dobbs, kindergarten teacher at Ellis; Addie Wilson, second-grade teacher at Marshall Elementary. Each of these teachers were surprised in their classrooms and celebrated by their students, family, and friends. Let's give them a hand. 205 Vibe. The top item this past week was RPS 205 teacher agreed to four-year contract. Okay, settle yourselves. Our feature block has is Auburn High School physics student driving change. Visit rps205.com/205vibe to read how Auburn physics students took time during Black History Month to examine the under-representation of various groups in science, engineering, and mathematics careers. Through their research, the students learned about how the sciences fit into the larger structure of our society and how they can use their voices to elevate others. Planning for the legislative launch is underway. Representative Joe Sonowski, Steve Sotman, Dave Vella, and Maurice West all confirmed they will be in attendance. Please submit any questions you have for our legislators to Laura Lommer. You can refer to the email that was sent last week with suggested topics and questions. We are gathering a list ahead of time so that legislators can be prepared to answer and respond to any questions or issues that are of any importance to anyone. Thank you in advance for your participation. Next, we want to tell you about the robot battles, Balloon Blitz, that took place at Rockford University in cooperation with RPS 205 College and Career Readiness. RPS 205 high school students competed in a robotic competition, designing remote-control robots with the goal of popping balloons on their opponent's bots. Take a look at this video about the competition that was featured on REX 13.
RPS 205 students participating in a robotics competition at Rockford University today. 13 WRX's Emily McMinn was at that competition, and Emily, what was the students' reaction to all that fun-friendly competition out there?
Yeah, Brittany, as you can actually see in this video behind me, the students were very excited today to get to show off the robots that they built, as well as compete against students from other schools. Each of the robots had three balloons attached to it, and the goal was to pop the balloons of their opponents. It was also a chance for the students to show off the robots they have been building in class. One of the students told WRX about the work that went into building the robots and getting to competition day.
We have spent a pretty long time working on this challenge. Throughout the whole year, we've learned how to code, we've learned how to build, the process of which, how to design it, and stuff like that.
This was the first time the Balloon Bots Robotics Event has been held since before the pandemic. Brittany, back over to you.
Looks like a lot of fun. Emily, thank you.
Good job. As part of our internal/external report, we are now including the list of schools Dr. Jared and Earl Dotson Jr. visit each month. As you can see, Earl Dotson Jr. Front row center. Thank you, Earl and Dr. Jared. Twenty-three students and five faculty from Central State University and the CSU College of Education visit Rockford Public Schools early in March. They met with RPS 205. Staff and students toured schools and learned about education careers in the Rockford Public Schools. The partnership is one of several strategies to diversify and recruit staff. Thank you to Stewart Square and Octane Rockford, who are hosting art exhibits for some of our talented students. The art of Marshall Elementary and middle school students can be viewed at Stewart Square until May. Octane Rockford is featuring Auburn High School art also until May. We invite you to support our students and all our community partners. Approximately 80 band students from Auburn, East, Guilford, and Jefferson traveled to the Northern Illinois University for the All-City Band Event. Their day consisted of workshops, instrument, sectional breakouts, and learning from NIU professors and graduate students. The evening ended with a performance that was livestreamed for friends and family members to enjoy. We truly appreciate all of our community partners. Thank you for investing in our kids. I had an opportunity to attend Booker's African-American Resource Center annual dinner a couple of weeks ago, along with Dr. Jared and Earl Dotson Jr. and staff from the DEI Department. RPS 205 was awarded the Educational Partnership Award, which was accepted on behalf of the district by Earl Dotson Jr. So this was, some of you may or may not know, Booker T. Washington Center, which is now on Kent, but it was originally years ago on South Main Street, and it was founded by Dr. Grant, because during World War I, it was set up for a camp for African-Americans to go. And you can find out more history by visiting their website. So it was definitely an enjoyable evening to be able to connect, another opportunity to engage with the community. So, thank you, Dr. Earl Dotson Jr., excuse me, Dr. Earl Dotson Jr., for accepting the award. In just a moment, I will hand the floor over to Dr. Jared, who will be walking us through the discussion around the board calendar. But first, I want to give you a sneak peek of what the more comprehensive board calendar would look like. We will have a tutorial in the future to explain the features once the events have been solidified. So, Dr. Jared, I'll turn it over to you at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Pearson. And I would like to just give a brief overview of the calendar, so I don't know who has the clicker. All right. So there are a total of, just to take the board back a little bit, we've been talking about this for a while in preparation for our objective, which is to start July 1 of the 23-24 school year, which is the start of our new fiscal year, with a calendar in place to make sure we have a really proactive strategy to interact with six groups. Now, where did we get those six groups? We built those with the board. We ended up starting with, I believe, four or five, and it grew to six after we had some conversation in this very committee. And you can see that those six are interacting with our staff, interacting with students, interacting with our families, interacting with college and career and business partners, so basically the school, all the way up to higher ed, to business partners there. Our government partners was added in, local, state, and federal, and then finally, different community organizations that we can interact with. So those are the six groups that we settled in on. And we worked that group together and finalized it at the last committee of the whole meeting. And what the feedback I received from the board was, and our team, we went back and said, "How can we make something that's a little more tangible for the board to react to?" So what our attempt this evening to do is to, by category, show what a typical list of activities over the course of an entire year could look like. Under staff, as the example here, you can see that some of these activities occur monthly, some occur weekly, some may occur monthly, some may occur annually. And our goal in this process is to continue to get your feedback. We will add, subtract, or modify based on your feedback in each of these six groups. The goal would be to give a better draft in the month of May, get the input potentially of any board members that are transitioning in in May or June, so that by July 1, we can start our new year with a finalized list. Now, why are we taking all of this time to build a list of activities to work with our board and our community? Number one, if we are going to effectively communicate with all six of these groups, I think it's really important that we have to be visible with these six groups. So that will mean a combination of the management team and administration partnered with board members to divide up these responsibilities, at your direction, of course, to determine who will cover what events, and ensuring that we do have coverage and visibility. Number two, and more importantly, we need to be listening to these groups. If we want to be great partners with our students and our families and our staff and our public officials in the government areas, all of that is predicated on really good listening. Three, if we are visible and connected with these groups regularly, if we are listening to these groups regularly, then we also may have the opportunity to directly communicate. One of the things that we are concerned with in the current environment that we operate in, there really aren't any strong media channels where we can guarantee any one group will get a consistent message. So part of the reason for the emphasis on a really elaborate calendar, where we are interacting with groups and sometimes in relatively small settings, is to ensure that those messages are exchanged, that we are actually listening as well as delivering messages to groups. I think if we sit back reactively and hope that favorable press coverage, or even if it's negative press coverage, will be absorbed by a large percentage of the community from any one source, that is increasingly unlikely. So our strategy here is very much one that is distributed and oriented around deep relationship building with these six groups. And my hope is that you will continue to work through Chairperson Pearson and the committee and our management team, represented by Earl, to ensure that we build up this list to match what you think makes sense. So there may be things on here that you'd like to see us go further, and there may be some things that you'd like, you think, "Maybe this isn't one we should spend as much time on." So my request to the board is that you review this list, reach out to me if you have any questions, reach out to me if you have any suggestions, and we'll make sure the final draft in May and June reaches any of the changes that you've requested. The final piece, and where I want to dedicate the majority of our time, is Dr. Reed is doing something that I think is really important to make this strategy work, and he's going to spend some time talking about it. But I really see that as the linchpin of this strategy, and that is, far too often when we are engaging in our community, we're often in a conversation about what our families and students think is best. So what we want to do to ensure that that is truly the voice of our families and students is I have challenged Dr. Reed and the DEI team to partner with our principals to ensure we have a minimum of five to eight family members and students from across the district that make up affinity spaces for us to listen directly to families and students. As I've had individual conversations with our board, I know that this is an area you would like to see us do a better job. And so we are really excited to talk a little bit more about what Dr. Reed and the team are putting together in partnership with the principals, so that when we are listening to families and students, we are truly listening to a representative group of those. And the board will help us devise different ways we can interact with those students and families. We don't want to assemble groups without having real intentionality about how we do that. So with that, I'm going to pause this introduction and open up for any follow-up questions about how we've organized this very rough draft. And obviously, formatting and other things will be improved as we finalize it, but this is really thankful for the starting point here, and wanted to open up for any questions, comments, or thoughts on our draft tonight. So with that, I will open up the floor. If you want me to highlight a specific group, I will just, I've got the clicker here, and I'll move it to the group so everyone can see what you're referring to. And if you don't have anything for tonight, you can give it to me another night as well, and we'll just turn it over to Dr. Reed a little bit faster. My feelings won't be hurt there either, so.
I did have a quick question.
Yes.
In regards to the REA, there is a REA Communication Council, REA Meeting, REA Instructional Council, REA Leadership Meeting.
Would you like a little background about those?
Yes.
Happy to do that. So, the one group that has traditionally had board representation is called the District Leadership Team, which is something we created about five or six years ago, and that has two board member representatives. And that is an opportunity for union leadership, principals, and board members, and an increasingly smaller number of district administrators are part of that group. The REA Communications Council is a very nice way of describing what is actually called the Grievance Committee. So this is something that exists in the contract, and on the fourth Monday of every month, I have the distinct privilege of meeting with REA representatives, and we talk about anything that has bubbled up from building-level concerns to see if there's anything I can bring back to our teams to resolve. That has actually become a very productive group and something that has served a very valuable purpose, and that is baked into the contract. The REA meeting is something that I choose to do alongside our Chief Human Resources Officer. I just, to ensure issues don't build up, we have an informal lunch meeting once a month and just check in outside of formal structures to ensure that our relationship is still effectively raising key issues. Instructional Council is led by our Chief Academic Officer, Mrs. Duttman, and her designees. There's principal and teacher representation, and that's where contractually instructional issues go through teachers. And then there are subcommittees for special ed, early childhood, and bilingual, as well as evaluation, which is the parajoint committee and the PAR, Peer Assistance and Review Committee. So altogether, we have about nine different collaborative structures with the REA, which may seem like a lot. It gets distributed, and the one that has had the best opportunity for board engagement has been the District Leadership Team. So I hope that's kind of a helpful overview. Ms. Pearson?
Yes, thank you very much for clarifying or providing additional information.
My pleasure.
Did you mention what the difference is between the REA meeting that's monthly and the REA meeting that is weekly?
So the weekly REA meeting, thank you, Mrs. McCulloch, I should definitely, I missed that in my overview, I apologize. That is a weekly phone call that I have on the calendar every week for the board president and I, and I've offered that up to... and I've offered that up to every REA president that we've worked with. And depending on the week, we may not have anything to talk about, but it's always on the calendar.
I have just a question. So how should REA, or, let's see, so REA members, some of them sometimes feel that they are not necessarily heard because of your presence and being engaged with REA? So how can you reassure that REA is not carrying out instructions from you?
Boy, well, I'm open to suggestions that the new REA leadership has, if that's been a concern that was, that came up perhaps during the election cycle. I have always found that the union representation that I've worked with has been very clear that they care about students first and foremost, but they also have a job to do in terms of representing employee voice first and foremost, and had the opportunity to work with two different administrations of union leadership. We will have an opportunity to work with a third group post-election here coming up, but that may be a topic that comes up. I think that really is up to their elected officials that they elect to kind of set that tone in terms of what these collaborative structures look like and any changes that would be made to ensure that teacher voice is amplified.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Seale?
Thank you. I see in a couple of categories that Let's Talk comes up. And of course, this is an area Earl will be the contact. That seems like an interesting area. And how would a board member engage in that sort of a, an activity?
So it's a great question. So Let's Talk is something that we could, what we would do with that. What we tried to add in at the bottom of all these categories is if there's any surveys, making sure that we talk as a board about how frequently you would like to review any formal survey data. Some of that's annual. And then Let's Talk is something that is updated really on a daily basis. And we've, it's probably time to have another conversation per stakeholder group about, is there any way the board would want to have that aggregated or reviewed in terms of Let's Talk feedback? For those that are newer to the board, Let's Talk is kind of an ongoing survey system where people that have concerns in the district can reach out directly to Let's Talk as opposed to sending an email. What's nice about that is it does allow us to track those responses, but also track how quickly we get back to people, too. So if you want to look at response times, we've done that in the past with the board. We've also looked at total volume of responses. We've looked at themes. So we would be happy to, these are on there to encourage the board to consider how you would want to look at the data as well, whether it's more qualitative in nature, like Let's Talk often can be, or quantitative in nature, which Let's Talk also can be when you look at a summary of the types of responses or response times.
Understood, thank you.
I noticed, and with Let's Talk, there's an area where the question or concern can be directed, but I, but there's not a section in there where it can be directed to a board member or board members, correct? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Jared?
Oh, I thought Earl was...
Oh, were you going to answer something?
Yeah, in terms, yeah, yes, yeah, I'm sorry. So let me affirm for those watching at home, Earl Dotson Jr. affirmatively nodded, yes. You can reach out to a board member through Let's Talk as well. Thank you.
I have a question. So under colleges, RBC, RU, NIU, we have nothing. I mean, it doesn't say when we meet or what the, how often we meet even, or, you know, and the same with the HBCU. So do we have a formal sit-down meetings? Or is this just all Bridget having conversations?
No, it is not, but really, there is not a formal structure built. So I think it's a good contrast for what Ms. Pearson brought up and what you're bringing up in terms of, we have a really elaborate set of processes to talk about issues with our REA partners, but there are some areas on here that are very limited in how developed they are. There have been times where I've had quarterly, semi-annual or annual meetings with different college presidents as we've had different people in those roles. But really, some of these underdeveloped areas are potential opportunities for us to build those out structurally for next year. So if you don't see an existing meeting structure, I see that as an opportunity for us to go further and to reach out at the board's request. So part of what you can do when you see this is, A, is there something missing? Or B, is there something on this list that you do see as a real priority? You want to give advice on upping the ante, so to speak, in terms of how frequently we interact and potentially having opportunities for board members to interact with those groups?
Well, I do, and that is the next page under Government, because we have another blank line next to County. Having gone through this understanding of how many people we have that are in the county and not in the city, and you have a, basically, is it monthly meeting with the mayor of Rockford? But I am aware and have been told by county board members that nobody ever reaches out to them. And not only the county, because we have the whole unincorporated county, but we have students from, we actually have students from Roscoe, Machesney Park, Loves Park, Caledonia.
Cherry Valley.
Cherry Valley, I'm getting there, I'm working north-south. And so, I mean, even if we all sat down once a year to have a conversation from a, but preferably more than that, perhaps with the county, we can't just, I don't think that we can just focus in totally just on the city and the mayor. I think that it would be a good opportunity to start having more expanded meetings with our local government so that we're all engaged.
Absolutely, I'll take that down. Any other questions or clarifying comments or suggestions? And again, we will keep coming back to this until the list is where you want it. And you can send these in writing to me via email, or you can reach out to me. If not, I will turn it over to Dr. Reed. Or actually, I'll turn it back to Chairperson Pearson, and then she can take it from there and then turn it over to Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Dr. Jared. It is really important that there's a board engagement or recommendations, suggestions on how we can strengthen our presence in the community, so please pass on any feedback. Thank you very much. Does Dr. Reed have a presentation or update? We'll now hear from Dr. Reed, thank you.
All right, just like Dr. Jared talked about earlier, we want to make sure that we have communities that represent the actual voice and things that are taking place in our schools. So one of the things that we are focusing on now, you know, due to the fore thinking of Dr. Jared in our cabinet and with Earl's team, and in particular Maureen, who makes, she's making sure that we're balanced with what we're doing. We're looking to build out parent-community groups, scholar-community groups, affinity spaces, and then we want to look at how we're communicating with our scholars, with our CPI communities. So our parent commitment is clear. We want to make sure that we're having a two-way conversation with our parents. And that cannot be the orthodox way. So with talking to these parents, when Maureen first gave this, I mean, one of the parents quickly said, hey, look, we have to communicate the way we want to communicate. And if that's text, that's via text. If it's, I talked to Jason, he's helping us set up, you know, a platform that allows us to communicate in the way that the parents want to communicate. We started off with very few parents, and at the end of the slideshow, we'll talk about where we are today. We have been doing this about three weeks now, and we've been listening to our parents that we have and building out this team. And it is clear, our standard of service is to make sure we collect data and that we are practicing serving our families in our schools. And we want to do that in a quadrant model, and like Dr. Jared spoke about earlier, each school should have a minimum of five parents. I have some schools already with 15 parents for their schools. So we have some schools that are doing it in a massive wave, and we have some, you know, schools that do have the five parents represented. With these five parents, we want to make sure it's a two-way thing going on here. Our parents, we feel, can do a great job with sharing some trainings that other parents want to see. We feel that our parents can communicate back and forth with us quickly because they have scholars in our schools. Many times, we stand here and we listen to people, and their voice is very important. But these are our parents that we serve with families and students that are in our schools currently. They also talked about the possibilities of volunteering opportunities and learning tools for our scholars at home. Sometimes it can be evasive to tell a parent back, you know, from a school standpoint, what to do at home, but when other parents are having that conversation, it begins to be powerful. We also want to allow the parents to talk and make decisions within that quadrant. And this totally builds collaboration within our community. Where we don't have to go out as much, but our community can come in and listen to some of the things that the parents that are in our buildings are actually saying that they need and want to see in a more positive manner. We're going to look at touchpoints that are going to be calendared out. Just speaking with the parents initially, we are asking for them to attend event each semester and engage in quarterly conversations with us, but then get a bi-weekly shared informational as it relates to that quadrant and things that are going on in the schools in that quadrant. This is the same with our scholars. I went to a community event, and many of the community events I'm going to, they're awesome events. But I'm sitting around that table, and our scholar's voice is not represented. So we have to create a space where our scholars can do that same thing. So we're looking to build out teams, grades four through 12. We're fourth and fifth graders, we're going to only have that one scholar. We're going to go in that school and listen to that scholar and get that scholar's voice. But from middle school through high school, we feel building out that voice of our scholars, it makes them able to model the expectations at our schools. It allows them to get us real information that they can use to make education more relevant. And it also influences our scholars to do some of the things that we're looking to do with our pathways and education, and get a voice for what it takes to be a scholar in RPS, a real voice. Not a person that's just coming to speak about something they heard, but this is a primary source, our scholars in our schools. So with the scholars, the same thing. We're talking about a two-way collaboration here. Fourth and fifth graders, like we said, we'll meet with them at their schools. We're looking to bring the sixth through 12th graders to our district, do a Zoom, we're looking to do this in multiple ways. Earl's team really spearheads how that looks. But each grade level is going to be asked to do similar things and be trained on how to get the discussion back to their school to make sure their schools are places of listening and belonging. Within our quadrants, they are already having fun with it. Every quadrant has a different color. One quadrant is yellow, I think another one's green. The schools teams are leading those quadrants and some of the information that's going to go out to those various quadrants, but they want to do it in a collaborative manner. And we want to make sure that we put on a quadrant event, at least one or two throughout the year, when we get those scholars with those parents together and celebrate some of the success. If you want to change the narrative of how we speak about RPS, we have to pick up in some of the things that we're doing strong. We continue to listen about everything that we're doing, not so great. But I think in every school, it's a champion thing that is going on in that school that we don't speak to. So I think when we're listening to our parents and listening to our scholars, we want to train them on some solution-oriented things to bring back to our schools and some things that we can actually listen to and get done from the people that are in our buildings on a daily basis. Along with that is listening to our staff. Our affinity spaces, we've set up groups that we're going to definitely be meeting with our teachers and staff on a yearly continuum. And the rhythm that you see above, those spaces are to be safe, where people can talk about their culture and talk about things that are important to them. And it's also a checkpoint to make sure that we're retaining our staff that are diverse, our staff of color in our district. So we have three touchpoints, one in September, November, and March. We're also taking it to another level where our district, staff, and our principals are going to have an affinity space. They're going to meet yearly at May. And we're going to also touchpoint with them via text throughout the year just to check in on them because they need to share, you know, their experience the same way. Right there, you will see our tracker. And we set a goal three and a half weeks ago. We went from few parents that were able to communicate and articulate and want to share their lived experience. Today, our goal is 200, and we have 140. So we're about 60 parents away from completing our goal. Our scholars were kicking the door down. And so we have a lot of scholars that want to communicate. We are not looking for that scholar that's the, you know, the premier scholar. We want the most influential scholar in that school. If that scholar just so happens to be an honor roll student, fine. But we want who is influencing other scholars in that building to be a part of this team. So we have not even started getting the scholars on the tracker, and we wanted 100 scholars, we're already at 40. So that means every school will have representation from their school about what their needs are in their school. The last thing with this is our CPI community. This is the way we are articulating, talk back and forth with our scholars to make sure that we de-escalating and communicating in a non-offensive way. And I think this aligns with everything we do. This year, we're going to make sure with this training that we're getting the right people at the table and get us in a cohesive calendar type of event on a yearly basis. So we're knowing that we're CPI-trained. This is going to include our bus drivers. We're going to do a presentation on the phenomenal work that they're doing, but they're going to get this training. Our school, our resource officers, the whole entire district is going to get this training because it's very important that we articulate back and forth with our scholars on a daily basis in a more formidable way. There are some schools that are doing it awesome and some that we can use some improvement with. So these communities are there for us to listen and serve, and it's also for us to get live information on what we can do better as a district, but in a more positive manner. So those are our communities. I just want to thank Dr. Jared for pushing us to build this out because at first, we could have took that approach, man, it's hard to get parents. I don't think we took that approach. I think Maureen really said, hey, Dr. Reed, just make sure it's well-represented. We have to have everybody at the table. And we've been knocking on doors. If a principal don't get it there, they'll see us. And this is not a, it's an unnegotiable thing. You're going to have parents represent your school, and we're not going to stop until we get all 200. And we're going to make sure our scholars are represented as well. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So you have two different slides. One said, talked about student voice team. And then you had another slide that said scholars, two-way communication. Are those both really the same?
Yeah, so that's the one, I'm sorry. The one is how we're going to communicate with the scholars. And that's the scholars that we're talking about, their lived experience, the grade levels, and this is more of how we're going to communicate back and forth with that subgroup of scholars.
And then will you have meetings, and maybe you're planning on this at your quadrant meeting, but will you have meetings where these student voice teams sit down and not just explain their concerns to school district employees, but have a conversation with parents and community members present so that there can be responsiveness and, you know, just some thoughts? And so it's not just the schools and administrat, I mean, the students and the administration, but also that there's communication with those other groups?
Yeah, we're definitely looking to make sure that when Earl is building that out, his team is building it out in that way. And I think another way that we're looking to do that is through our communication. The platform that I think Jason's team is going to set up will allow us to kind of blend the two. But definitely, I see what you're saying, that we need to make sure those two are communicating, and we look to do that within our meeting system that we set up.
Okay, with my understanding, when we first started talking about all this, that they would at least have, you know, kind of this big roundtable in each quadrant, once, at least twice a year, with maybe thematic, like something around attendance, for example, or something around books, or whatever it was, so that students could give their expect, you know, their reaction, and then also have your other input. But that, it would be kind of a student-led voice. So I'm not sure if that's where it's going. I'm just asking if we are still...
I think that's definitely where it's going. And we even want to do it more quarterly than, you know, just every semester. We do want to do that every quarter. And I think the topics, we want to listen first before we give out the topic because it could be around attendance, it could be around belonging. It is definitely going to be some of those, but we do want to listen. So I think the first goal is definitely to get that team completely built out before May, begin to survey what some of the topics can be. So when we do get it on the calendar, it is that, what you're saying, that they can have that roundtable and communicate with the parents and the community? Because you're right, I do want the community members and the parents to hear some of the concerns that scholars are having and some of the things that they want to see done concerns that scholars are having and some of the things that they want to see done because it carries back at home. I think some of the scholars really spoke about their needs when we were meeting at Auburn, about the needs to make sure that their, you know, families and community members support some of the initiatives. You might not have had that support back at home, but when they see that this is something that is important to them and they're scholars, we're seeing parents are getting on board. And I think we just can't dismiss our parents, you know, assume that they didn't care because the parents were really quickly jumping on to be able to communicate back and forth with us in this format.
And who will you survey for these topics? Or how will you survey for the, to determine what your topics are?
So I think we haven't got that far yet. That's what we want to look and do by May. But right now, I think the first concern is to get these scholars able to understand that they are going to be a part of the community. And I think we'll get to that as we are closing out the year, what that can look like.
Thank you.
Dr. Reed, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I think you started to answer this with that last response, but over the weekend, I was thinking about the, at the bottom of slide four, he says, we want the most influential scholar at each grade level. And that felt like a very different sort of approach to gathering voices. And I spent a lot of time thinking about, what does influential mean? And I guess I would like to hear what your idea is behind that. Because I, I just think that people can be influential in lots of different ways.
So the most influential scholars, that is scholars that's able to lead other scholars about the initiatives that are going on in the school. So I'll give you an example, as a principal, I will always, when we were just over at Roosevelt, for example, the young lady that has the most influential voice about things that are going to get done positive, she might have had a tougher experience where she might not be that straight A scholar. But every scholar, when she speaks, is able to articulate what she wants done. So why allow that scholar to go down a wrong path and be an influencer of something that we don't want? Let's grab her and pick up that person that's influencing others. Whether we like it or not, some of the scholars that, you know, other scholars are following may not be going down that right path, but they're influencing. So I, the honor roll kid, I love him, great, awesome. But I want the person that can lead and influence others to do some of the things that we want done in our schools. And Roosevelt has a prime example, that young lady, when you walk in there, she can get those boys to move in at the tune, she won't get the class because you know we got to be there. She's not on the honor roll. I just want to be straight up. But everything that she wants done, she can influence others on that entire floor to get it done. So bringing her to the table is a real lived experience and it's something that you really need to see because you're definitely going to get that honor roll student, they're going to be talked about. But that scholar, you might never mention her at one of these meetings. So we need to bring the influential scholar to the table to have those conversations.
Thank you.
You know, I think this is a very good approach. And while we will work on inclusion, of course, as you aforementioned, we definitely don't want to leave out our honor roll students. I think that we have an opportunity to simultaneously involve our scholars. And this is an approach that I have not seen since I've been on the board. And I'm sure that there will be opportunities for growth and revamping, but I think that this is a very positive effort. And I definitely commend you, Dr. Reed, for your work. And while you're standing there, I'll tell you this, you know, I visit schools periodically. I have my ear to the community and the community is so appreciative of you. And, you know, the schools, the school principals talk about how you show up when it is not required of you, doing those extra things that is not required of you. So thank you so much for the work that you've done so far. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
This concludes the internal stake, internal external stakeholder committee portion. You have a question, Jude or Ms.?
I was just moving on to the next one.
All right, carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowlands will lead the planning and development committee portion of the meeting.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the resolution to allow appropriations for fiscal year 2024 draft budget. We've talked about this in the past. So our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. And we, a few years ago, at the request of the administration, moved to a system where we don't approve the new budget right as of July 1st. It doesn't really get approved until the fall. Legally, the administration can't spend money that hasn't been appropriated by the board. If we haven't approved the appropriation, then they can't spend the money, which is a good system to have. But that also means that we won't have an approved budget on July 1st, and so they won't be able to spend money. So doing this, if you read the resolution, we're authorizing them to spend up to 25% of the draft budget until we get the final budget approved, somebody gets the final budget approved in the fall. So that does two things. First, it covers the district as of July 1st, when it doesn't have an approved budget. But then secondly, there are some long lead time items where they might know they want to spend money next year. It would be really nice if they could start doing the groundwork now to make, place an order. Some large ticket items sometimes are long lead time. So that's what this resolution is about. So does anybody, the fiscal year budget, the actual budget, will be brought to the board for approval at the September 12th, 2023 board meeting. So does anybody have any questions about this, this resolution to allow them to spend money up to 25% of the draft budget amount until they get the final budget approved?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And if there's no questions, this will be brought to the board for approval at the April 11th board meeting, this resolution will. The next item on the agenda is option to lease property to Forefront Power for Community Solar. So we apparently own 10.68 acres of land that I'd never heard of at 14 Ogilvy Road, which is almost immediately adjacent to Lathrop Elementary School. And Mr. Phillips did some digging and was telling me just before the meeting, because he didn't know either, we apparently bought that land in 1997 and somebody thought we might build a middle school there, which obviously never happened. The proposal now, and really what's on the table tonight for discussion is an option. So Forefront Power wants to buy an option. We're not actually approving the lease right now, but we are approving that they would have the option to lease approximately half of that property, 5.5 acres, to develop a community solar project. So this is different than what we talked about before. This is not electricity for our schools. This is electricity that they're going to generate for the community. It just happens to be on our land. Hannah Diaz-Puscar, Forefront Power is here to present the details of the community solar project. And is in fact, somebody here? Thank you.
Make sure this is on. Hi, folks. Good evening. I'm Hannah Diaz-Puscar. Thank you for introducing me. And as you mentioned, I am with Forefront Power. And we are indeed looking at expanding our partnership. As you know, back in January, we presented the Behind the Meter portfolio at some of your schools. And this time around, we're actually looking at the large also in Rockford. So that being said, you know, for folks here, obviously, community solar is not necessarily something that you talk about every day. But what community solar is, is basically a project that we would call off-site. So it's not on a premise, on a roof or anything. And what it allows is for folks that can't have solar on their roof to actually benefit monetarily from net energy metering credits on their bills. And so in Illinois, right now, the law allows for community solar projects to be cited on public land and school district land, really. And that will benefit the school, but then also the story really is that 60% of that project needs to go to the basically community at large. And really what community solar tries to do is get all these small subscribers, if you will. So apartment complexes, small houses, you know, folks that also cannot afford to put solar on their roofs, you know, that is a pretty big upfront investment for residential customers, to basically take part in a project and get bill, bill credits that will reduce their electricity bill. So that's, that's really how the community is benefiting from community solar. So for Rockford, in a nutshell, there's a two-pronged approach to community solar. The first prong is the land lease portion. And as you mentioned, you know, you have currently land that is basically lying fallow, if you will, being unutilized. And so what we would do is enter into an option to lease, like you mentioned. And the structure is basically, we have an option period of five years where we're doing the due diligence for the project, making sure that the project passes basically all permitting, all interconnection with ComEd, the utility. And as soon as we basically have line of sight that this project can in fact be built and be interconnected into ComEd, then we would be able to turn that into an actual lease with the school district. And then once that lease comes into place, we would have a lease for 20 years. That would be the initial term. And then Forefront Power would have an option to extend it for an additional 10 years. And so what I wanted to highlight here was the lease revenue is about $196,000 over the first 20 years. And what we're offering is $1,500 an acre escalating at 2% every year for this land. And some of the risks that, you know, we like, because obviously those are the benefits that the school district would get is, you know, the land, the land lease payments over the term. The risks particularly for this project really lie on securing incentives. So my colleague Rachel McLaughlin might have spoken about the incentives back when we talked about the Behind the Meter projects. But basically, the incentives that we're looking at right now will reset June 1st. So we were trying to make the May 31st deadline. We would need permitting, interconnection, and site control in the form of a lease before then to submit for these incentives. But what we're seeing now, we actually started the interconnection process back in February and also the permitting process is that we might not actually make that May 31st deadline, but we still would, will basically be able to work into the next, what is called delivery year for incentives. And because Rockford is actually a tier one school in terms of need-based funding, you actually have priority in the schools, public schools block, which is the incentive program under the Illinois Power Agency that is doling out this money. And in interconnection, the project we've already submitted for an application, our pre-application, which was basically a high-level understanding from ComEd as to what is going on, went really well. And now the full app is in place and we're actually expecting results back June 6th. So, you know, everything is, and basically complete the due diligence really fast so Rockford can actually see this project materialize sooner rather than later. You know, we started this process, obviously before this option to lease was approved. If so, just so that we basically didn't lose any time to make this project a reality. And then with permitting, you know, sometimes traditional community solar has some backlash with public comments, you know, mostly when you have projects that are like in agricultural land, folks don't really like seeing land that is used for agriculture converted into solar. But of course, here, that is not the issue. You know, you have just land that is, you know, is not being used for agriculture, is just kind of lying there behind some trees. And so this would be the perfect opportunity to basically have Rockford further contribute to the community and also obviously take, take part of this incentive program and get some more revenue for the district at large. So that's the land lease. And then the second prong are the on-bill credits. So I mentioned briefly that community solar allows you to see a credit on your bill. So it's a monetary credit. So every month in your ComEd bill or your alternative retail electricity supplier, you would see a credit for the amount of production that you subscribe to. So in this case, it would be 40% of the production of the solar project. And what you would see is a 10% discount to that amount. So the mechanics of that is ComEd will give you 100% of the credit on your bill and basically Forefront would bill for 90% of that credit. And you, just for subscribing to the solar array, would get 10%, a 10% discount basically on whatever the credit is. And what that credit amount is, is actually dictated by ComEd. It's dictated by the price to compare. You know, it's public information. You know, if you go to the ComEd website, you'll see what that is. And right now, it's fluctuating, fluctuating around eight cents per kilowatt hour. So with that, you know, we've calculated that if we just adjust for inflation over the next 20 years, that the district would be saving about $128,000 on your electricity needs here. And what is actually really neat on the community solar portion here is that schools that maybe didn't qualify for the first round of Behind the Meter solar, where, you know, maybe the roof wasn't in great condition or it just wasn't as big, you can actually subscribe those schools that are not getting solar on their premises to the community solar array so that they can also benefit from these credits. And you could even, you know, subscribe the offices here as well to this community solar project. And in terms of the risks on the on-bill credits, really what you're looking at are the price to compare credit fluctuation. So, you know, worst-case scenario, the energy is never going to be zero, like the ComEd is never going to not charge anything for the energy that they deliver. But because we're offering you a 10% discount on whatever the price to compare is, you'll always be saving on whatever that credit is. Instead of us providing you a fixed rate and maybe the price to compare fluctuating around that, that set rate, you always know that worst-case scenario, if the array doesn't produce because, you know, an inverter went down or a transformer blew, you won't owe us anything because you haven't seen anything on your bill. So that is basically community solar in a nutshell. And I wanted to keep it brief in this case to allow for more questions. And then, you know, I'll keep it engaging. I know this can be a pretty hefty topic, so I didn't want to bore folks with technical details if you didn't want them. So I'll open it up for questions. And I guess while we look at the questions, let me just kind of go into, this is currently what we've designed so far in terms of the community solar layout. And I will say that we're actually currently updating this layout because the, the further right side part of this parcel is actually owned by the city. So we cannot obviously build there, so we're transferring some of those modules to the southern part of the array, southeastern portion. And we've actually, we were actually talking to the city yesterday and they did, you know, wanted us to bring up that if the district was interested in purchasing that sliver, that they would be willing to sell it. And I know I've had conversations with Michael that that's not the case, but I, you know, they wanted us to let you know that that's something that is on the table. But other than that, you know, we're looking at about five and a half acres total for the system size. And so that's where, you know, the lease payments, you know, come into play. Do folks have any questions specifically on this project?
I'd just like to know if the district would incur any cost in prepping the property for the panels?
So you would not. So all that, similar to the power purchase agreements for Behind the Meter, all of that development work comes at Forefront's cost. And so, you know, we've put together a budget that includes, you know, interconnection costs, prepping costs, build costs. And so really what we're asking is just let us lease the land so we can put together this project, we'll pay you, and then you'll also get to reap the benefits of subscribing to the solar array.
Mr. Segal?
All right. Thank you. And maybe this is like really, really early to ask this, but the- And maybe this is like really, really early to ask this, but the kind of lease terms were in our packet, so I read them.
Absolutely. As he should.
Really struggling to get to sleep the other night. Did the trip. So, and this is really probably a long way down the road, but one of the comments in the contract, and for specific, it was Exhibit C on page five, talking about additions and removals. And it says, "Tenants shall have the right, but not the obligation at any time and from time to time during the term, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, demolish and remove the solar facility." Now, later on, it did, still in Exhibit C, but on page 12, it talks about the tenant fails to decommission, the landlord, whatever, can make them, can make the tenant pay for the removal and the demolition. But it just seemed like those are two kind of conflicting clauses. And I guess what I'm hoping to learn is, this is an industry that has a lot of changing of hands in companies. Companies come and go. I hope yours doesn't. I hope yours stays around a long time. But if suddenly whoever is responsible for those arrays walks away, I just want to make sure that the school district isn't stuck with this structure that is probably going to cost them every penny that they saved and earned from the lease to demolish and dispose of. The other part of that question is, can you talk about the expected life of these arrays?
Oh, absolutely. So let me answer the easiest question first, which is the expected life of the arrays. So usually, a solar array has an expected life of about 35 years. And so when you look at the terms of the lease and the initial term, it's 20 years, and then Forefront has the option to renew or to extend, excuse me, that lease term another 10 years. And in most, the likelihood of us doing that is actually really, really high, because that's what we model in our cash performance, you know, just kind of what that looks like. So, you know, we're basically almost at the life of the project there. So usually, 35 years modules, they have warranties for 25 years, but we know that, you know, we can extend up to, up to 35 years. And even after 20 years, modules are still producing 80% of what they would have produced in year one. So it's still a pretty, a pretty decent production that you get after, after 20 years. In terms of decommissioning, and you know, and this is something that, you know, comes up a lot, because of course, you know, 20 years is a long time, you know, most of us are probably not going to be around in 20 years to like, talk about, at least not at this board, to talk about, you know, what is going on. But one of the things that we did talk about with Michael and with Tom, cross council, was, you know, obviously, Forefront Power has a financial wherewithal, you know, we are owned by an A-rated company, we would be able to come and do that, you know, 20 years down the road. Our parent company has been around for 400 years, so I would hope that the next 20 years are not the 20 years that break us. Yeah. But, but in the event that, as you said, you know, for whatever reason, this, this site were to change hands, what we've negotiated in the contract is basically that, one, if we don't, if we have to assign this array, or, you know, sell it, if you will, to a different party, if that party does not have the financial wherewithal, and actually, it is at Rockford's, Rockford has basically the ability to decide this, you know, it will be consented by Rockford, then that separate entity would have to post basically what is called a restoration security. So it could be either a letter of credit or escrow, et cetera, where basically you know for a fact that at the end of 20 years or 30 years, there's enough money to decommission the system. So that, like you said, you know, there's, you know, the district is not stuck trying to decommission the system. And I will say though, for Community Solar system, most authorities having jurisdiction, and this is not just in Illinois, but, you know, across the United States, they do require us to post decommissioning bonds anyway, to make sure that the land is restored to, you know, what it was before. So I would say that Rockford basically right now has a belt and suspenders approach to this, to this decommissioning question. And then you also asked about the conflicting terms. And I think, and I can, I can make sure with, with my counsel, but the difference there is, one, is if we, for whatever reason, had to take a portion of the system and replace it or take care of it, you know, that we have that flexibility. And then on the decommissioning, where we're actually needing to come in and take the system out and dispose of it, that's where we have 90 days from the term end date. And then if, for whatever reason, we don't do this within 90 days, then the district would basically have the option to remove it and then bill us for it, or build the entity that owns it at that time. So that's where the distinction lies.
Thank you. One last question.
Sure.
You talk about the usable life of the, of the arrays. What happens to them when they are consumed, when you move them, whatever, you decommission them?
So we actually would recycle them. So right now, there's been an uptick of companies that are looking at basically what happens at the end of life of solar. You know, we want to make sure that we're environmentally conscious and that we're recycling these materials in a sustainable way. And so what we would do is basically just recycle those materials. We work with companies that would do that for us. And most of the time, there's basically like a residual, like resale value on those recycled materials too. And so that's, that's what Forefront Power would do with these, is just make sure that, you know, we recycle them. Because at that point in 20 years, I'm sure that the wattage on the panels is going to be incredible, and these are going to be, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty panels to look at maybe, and reminiscing of older times when, kind of like, I guess, like iPhones, you know, like, or I, I remember, what were those called? The iTunes? Not iTunes, iPods. Oh my gosh. So there you go. I forgot what they talk, like what they're called. But yeah, something like that, where you had the big iPod, and now you have all your, all your music in your phone. I'm assuming that something very similar will happen to panels in 20 years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. McCollough?
Two questions. So Community Solar has to be on property that is owned by some governmental entity? I mean, why wouldn't you just ask us to buy the land?
So for the, so under the Illinois Power Agency, the, there's a, the adjustable block program is the incentive program. And in this past year, they basically came up with a public schools block, basically just trying to incentivize public schools to go solar, both for the behind the meter and Community Solar portions. So for this particular project, we're looking at the Community Solar being part of the public schools block. One, because there's less, there's less of a stream of projects that are eligible to get into the public schools block. Not a lot of schools have land that they can use for Community Solar. And you definitely don't have a lot of schools in the ComEd area that have enough land to do Community Solar. So that requirement really only applies to, to, to Community Solar projects that want to take advantage of the incentive block under the public schools block, which is better than traditional Community Solar. And right now, there's hundreds of megawatts in the Community Solar, like traditional Community Solar pipeline, if you will. And this basically just allow us, allows us to be able to put this through the incentive and build it actually as soon as 2025. If you wanted to do traditional Community Solar, you're looking at a project that is going to basically wait for incentives for a long time and wait to go up, to be operational for a long time. Because if we don't have incentives, we wouldn't start building the project. And you, you asked me if, why wouldn't you just buy and do it yourself? It's pretty expensive to do. I would say that for a system this size, you're maybe looking at about four to five million dollars between development and actual construction. And there's also all the requirements that you would need to manage with the Illinois Power Agency and ComEd. There's rec contracts that are like 60 pages long, and we have a dedicated asset management team that like handles that, like you have to upload stuff to the IPA every quarter on production and all these things, making sure that you get your renewable energy credits. You know, you have ComEd with the smart inverter rebate that you also have to manage. And so is there a possibility? Yes. But I would say for Community Solar, if behind the meter is in itself complicated, I think Community Solar is just maybe one or two levels above behind the meter.
And I would assume that you would get more credits by going through the Community Solar for your putting it into place, right? Supposedly, the credits for installation of what's already there. That's all right. This has taken too long ready for me to, I can ask us separately. But the other question I have is the means of egress that we have to get to that field, like when we mow it. Currently, we cross over park district property, so are you putting in a road?
We are. And actually, that's part of the update to the design that we're presenting to the AHJ is the access road would actually, does this have a pointer? Let me see. Yeah. Okay. So the access road is likely going to go over here. So we'd clear some trees and make an access road, because as you said, you know, we'll need to clean and maintain, you know, the array property.
Is that our property as well?
Yes, yes.
So is that part of the lease then, or?
So, yes. So basically, the lease would cover, so your property kind of looks like a, like a, it basically doesn't include this quadrant here. So it's all this up here, like where there's no trees.
And where's the city?
The city is right here.
Yep.
So we're taking off five rows here of panels, and we're basically putting them down here. And then, like you said, the access road would be, would be here. And yes, part of that access road would come, would come into the lease.
Thank you.
Yep.
So one question I'd ask privately, I just want to say it publicly so it's on the record. I'd ask the administration, do you see any potential use for this in the future? That land, just so everybody, Mr. Phillips had shown me on Winjes, so it is kind of like a U. We don't own that building, whatever it is at the top. We own a slice on either side. We own everything at the bottom. The city of Rockford owns a slice that runs up the right side as we're looking at it. Mrs. Hoadley suggested that's probably an old road right away, where they never put the road in.
Yeah.
That's probably what it is. The park district owns a slice that's off of that map that runs up and down, and then there's Lythrop. So Lythrop is right next to some land owned by the park district, then you've got that slice owned by the city, then you've got this thing, this slice of land here. The answer, you know, that I got was that they can't imagine ever doing anything with this piece of land. I also asked the question, well, could we sell it and get more than we think we could get out of it by doing this? And the answer was probably not. It was fairly, probably more emphatic than that. That doesn't, they don't think that that, that land would be worth that much. So that's the economics of it. One question that just occurred to me, you know, just staring at this, so there are houses along there, and we do want to be good neighbors. There are, there is a tree line or something there?
Yes.
Are we imposing any landscaping requirements, or are there going to be landscaping requirements that sort of protect those houses against the?
So the, the authorities having jurisdiction have asked us to include a setback, you know, from the tree line anyway, for, for the solar. I don't remember specifically how many feet it is, but right now, I don't believe there's any specific, like vegetation requirements other than the tree line that currently exists there. And I haven't been to the site, so I don't know how dense the tree line is. But some, some AHJs sometimes require the fence to be semi, what is the word I'm looking for? That you can't really see all the way inside, so you kind of, kind of see, but you can't really. And so, you know, hopefully, that, that will be, you know, something that is enough for, for the neighbors that you have on, on your, on the western side of the property. But I presume that, that the tree line already acts as a, as a natural barrier for whatever is happening in this, in this area.
Ever so. And that is a church, Tim.
The thing at the top is a church?
Yep.
Okay. And you are going to be responsible, you will be fencing the entire?
Yes, yes. We will be fencing it. It is in our interest to fence it. We don't want anybody getting into the solar array and potentially damaging it. So yes, it will be fenced.
If I were a neighbor, I'd rather look at trees than a fence. I don't know if that's something that has to be, I mean, that's looked at down the road, but if we're going to say we lease it to you, we lose all control about that after this, right? Is that right, Mr. Phillips?
Actually, the city has jurisdiction of what, what would need to go around it. So if there's something that, if they need some sort of vegetation, they would dictate if we would need to, or Forefront would need to install that.
Yeah.
So, done?
Well, I was just going to say, so, I mean, that's a zoning issue, but we own the land, and so we can still impose conditions. So I guess I would just ask the administration to keep this in mind. And, you know, we don't know what the final plat is going to look like, or what the final plan is going to look like, to try to, try to preserve that vegetation along there, just to, to give those, the people that live there a little bit of a block from the view.
Will we be approving the lease?
The leases, as Mr. Segal read at nighttime, apparently, one time, the lease is attached, as it should be. So this is an option. And as soon as we approve the option, and they, everybody signs the option, they unilaterally get to exercise that option at any time, at which point that lease will go into effect.
But we're not approved, I mean, we're not, it doesn't matter what their final plan is, we're, they get to do what they want to do with the land, basically.
Well, that's a good question. I mean, are we, when is, when is this going to get approved? When is this going to be finalized? And is the finalization of this, is the options, how much control do we have over it, I guess, is the question?
So I, I think, we haven't seen a final plan at this point.
No. And usually, at this stage, it's very preliminary. So for, in order to get a hold of the incentives, we have to go through the permitting process, which is what we're doing right now. So I would expect that, you know, we're going up for the zoning board of appeals. I believe we would need to submit by April 13th to go to the May 16th meeting, and then we would go to the Code and Regulation Committee on May 22nd, and then the Code and Regulation Board, June 5th. Once, if that is basically all said, I think we might be done with permitting. I know we've, we've, we have retained a consultant, like a permitting consultant, to just make sure that, you know, we're, we're doing all the required due diligence. But before we convert this to a lease, we would basically update also the, the layout of, of this, of the solar system. But, but to your point, basically, once we're leasing the, the land, you know, we would want some discretion in terms of, you know, how we build it, et cetera. And like Mike said, you know, we would be subject to whatever, you know, the city and all the authorities having jurisdiction impose on us. But basically, we would have quiet enjoyment, if you will, of, of the, of the land.
And that blue line is the electric, is the easement for the new electrical line?
So, correct. So that, that blue line is basically where we show ComEd, where we would be interconnecting the system to their three-phase lines. So as you, so you see, it'll go up and across into the nearest pole for ComEd. So we'll trench that basically to make sure that we can.
That's going to be buried, that's not overhead?
For the most part, they're buried. I don't know, I mean, I would presume that it has to be buried. I don't think that we can do overhead, especially if we're crossing that, that street. But I can check with my, with my engineering team and my development team.
Okay.
So this project would be in Sub District A. And so from
And so from what I see, so Julia Lathrop is actually on Clover. And Ogilvy Road, the area that I'm thinking of is, this would be right next to Garden Hills, which is a subdivision. If I have, if I'm picturing this right, because this is the only land that, that I can visualize, because when you go down to Julia Lathrop School, there's land like towards the, the back.
Yeah.
But we're talking about what, that's actually on Ogilvy Road.
I think this is Ogilvy Road, yeah, this one right here.
Okay.
Top, yes.
So this would be, no doubt, something that I would get several calls about. And I don't know that I, I wanna, I wouldn't be able to manage that. Like you, you have literally an entire, so you have that church, you have houses there on Ogilvy, and then you have that little space, then Garden Hills. And I would have to hear from every single home in Garden Hills about this, this panel. And, I mean, we're not voting on it next week, so I'm, I'm interested to know if the district will have.
We are voting on it next week.
Oh.
This will be brought to the board, this is not my script. This will be brought to the board for approval at the April 11th board meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought it was May. So we haven't gotten any feedback from the public, other than the city offering to sell that portion of the land. So neighbors that live in that area have no.
We have not taken it to the community, Ms. Pearson.
And I will say, so when we go to, to the, the zoning board of appeals and court of regulation, they usually have like a comment period, too. But what we've done in the past, too, when community solar might, when, when we think that the community might have some pushback, is we've actually done some community outreach before this, so kind of in anticipation and to put, basically, to help the project, like, be seeing it with a better light, and not just something that just happened and the community was never involved. So I take, I take your point, and thank you, and if that is something that the school district wants us to do, and if you think that is important, then we would more than, we would be more than happy to engage with the community, and especially with the neighboring houses and the church, and just kind of let them know what the district is planning, and, you know, answer any questions they might have, and hopefully that relieves some pressure on you as well.
Correct, thank you. So I, I would ask the board not to vote on this next week. And yes, I would like that community outreach to be done before the board moves any further with making a decision to lease.
If the board chooses to lease, and then it goes to whoever sits down with the community, and there's community resistance, can the zoning be stopped, or can, where, where else along this journey can it be stopped by having community input?
So it would be, it would be the zoning board, basically, if the zoning board does not approve the, the rezoning, basically, that's where the project would stop, because we need this permit in order to submit for incentives.
So I don't want another situation that we vote on a matter, and then additional information comes afterwards. So again, I'm asking the board not to move forward with voting in regards to leasing this until there's been more community engagement.
So how much community engagement are you speaking about?
Whatever their process is, and the outreach, that that be completed before we vote, before we vote on it.
So it is a, well, it's not been put on the table yet, so it's not like we need a motion, but we do need some consensus, because that changes your timeline as well.
It does, and, and, you know, one of the considerations, and obviously, we can talk about, like you said, how much, how much community engagement do we want? One of the considerations, going back to the incentives, is making sure that, you know, because this is a first-come, first-served, even though you have priority of being a tier-one school, you know, we want to make sure that you can get into the incentive block, so that, you know, your community solar system can be built, and the late, the lease rate that we are offering still stands, because if the economics were to basically take a hit, because a subsequent block is not as, as profitable, if you will, then, you know, we would have to basically come back with a different offer. So here, you know, we're thinking that we'll have the, the conditional use permit, or the zoning permit, by hopefully June 5th, and then we would be able to submit into the, into the adjustment block program, probably that first or second week of June, which would basically put you at the top of the list of, to get the incentive. If we wanted to do basically more months, excuse me, of community outreach, then yes, that would just set back that timeline and, and wouldn't guarantee that, that lease, that lease rate. So we can certainly start talking to the community, and since we have the, at least the Code and Regulation, the Regulation Committee happening May 22nd, and then the board happening June 5th, I would definitely say that we could start reaching out now and make sure that the community is involved and has, has had time to, to voice their concerns, you know, before those dates. Because obviously, we also never want to come to a board, a zoning board, kind of like with our, with our eyes wide, like with our eyes shut, and like not understanding where the community lies. So, you know, if, if that's something that's gonna be an issue, then, you know, we'd rather be proactive, get in front of it, and talk to custom, like to, to the folks, and know kind of how we can mitigate some of their concerns.
So where are you at in the zoning process now with the city?
So we, so we met yesterday with the AHJs, and basically, the, the feedback we got was, you need to submit by April 13th, so next week, to make it into the, the May 16th meeting. So right now, I'm having this layout be updated after that conversation with, with the city and the AHJs. And then, you know, once we, once we submit on April 6th, April 13th, then that would kickstart the process. And like I said, you know, we would be, we would be done with the zoning process on June 5th, if, if we follow the timeline that, that the city kind of laid out for us.
And when do you have to have final approval from us in order to do your, whatever submission you're talking about, to get into the first block?
So we would need, so your board meetings are once or twice a month? Once a month?
Twice a month for actual board meetings, and then a committee, this is a committee the whole meeting.
So probably before June 5th, so that we can have all three, all three components, basically, that we need. So site lease, which would be, you know, the option to lease, the permitting, and interconnection, ready to submit into the program.
I'm just trying to solve a problem here. I mean, can we run the zoning process at the same time and get the community involvement through the zoning process?
Yeah.
And who's the alderman there, do you know?
Gabrielle Torino.
Okay. And then have everybody, both, you know, the zoning process and us, approve it by the end of May?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is definitely, it's definitely possible. We could do that. It, it really is up to the district, you know, whether, I mean, either, either way, if the community pushes back so much that the zoning board doesn't want to approve it, then, you know, that project would stop, whether or not you approve it next week or in May. I think that doesn't really, it doesn't really change the calculus. If, if the community's not for it, you know, you're gonna have a headache. So.
No, I think that the sensitivity is, if we approve it, though, without getting community input, and just rely on the city, then it looks like we're trying to reroute something through.
Yeah, but to your point, yes, we could come back later in May and approve the lease, once we've had some community involvement, and we understand kind of where the temperature of the community lies for this, for this project.
So who becomes responsible for putting together a meeting with the community? I mean, in our organization, because this is before it gets brought back to us. How would, how does that proceed, Mr. Phillips?
I would work with Forefront to, to make that happen, and we would reach out to the specific community areas that would be impacted by the solar array.
Well, I'm just suggesting, let's not duplicate things. Why don't we connect with the city and run the same process of the cities and participate?
I think what Mr. Rollins suggested makes sense to me as well, which is that the outreach would not be to the community through Forefront, it would be through, through the aldermen, and that we would have a joint listening session, and we can essentially accomplish one listening session, as opposed to the district doing one, and the zoning committee doing one separately. So the outreach would be to coordinate your process for the district and zoning, and you'd bring it, this has already been heard from a first reading, you would bring it back with the community feedback completed, and then I think Board Member Pearson would like to be able to review that feedback, as was her suggestion, and I think it sounded, it seems to me there's strong consensus from the board with that as well. So let's just bring that back in late May, after some community, some partnership with the Alderance Arena has occurred, to let the community weigh in, and it will come back. If that is, in fact, the will of the people in that community, part of our community, great. If not, then, as you said, we probably won't be coming back, so.
And that particular group of homes, I mean, they don't get any special incentives in their electrical.
So they would, so what we've talked with Michael is, basically, we would give the community, basically, and like a right of first refusal, if you will, to sign up for the community solar at a 10%. So basically, the same terms that the district has, and they would be able to sign up, and they could get bill credits. So that's, you know, I think that's the, that's the beauty of, of having community solar hosted by the school district, is that, you know, you can, you can show the, the district, like you're actually impacting them in another way that is helpful, which is, you know, we're now also helping you save money. You know, we're not only taking care of your kids, and bringing, excuse me, more, more revenue into the district, but now you, now we're helping with your bill. But yes, anybody, not only those homes, but all of the homes, you know, like are possibly a part of the community, Rockford would have.
Committee Chair Rollins, I think we have clear direction.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
All right. Anybody have any actual, like, technical questions for our presenter?
I'm just, I'm just kind of curious. So at what point did you learn about the property? Because Mr. Rollins has been on the board for 10 years, and, and he didn't know that we have the property. So how did you come into the knowledge of the property?
So we actually have a program on Google Earth that show us parcels, and so whenever we do an analysis of a school district, and where they could do solar, we also look at adjoining parcels that look like they have land. And we just happened to see that this land was owned by the school district. And so we basically separated our, our proposals. We said, let's do the behind the meter, and then let's look at community solar, because that's its whole different offering. But that is how we learned about it. It's just basically this, 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 this program that basically feeds into, I think, the Winnebago County. I know Michael uses this a lot.
The Winjes.
The Winjes, thank you. And so that's how, that's how we knew that this, that this parcel was available.
So, so you were aware of the property at the time that we did behind the meter?
So we were, yes. We, correct.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, folks, for hosting me.
Yep, you're welcome. Now we move on to the longer portion of my committee report. The 2024 budget requests for nutrition services, transportation, and our ED Services team. Tonight's fiscal year 24 budget request will be for transportation, for transportation will be presented by Mike Slife, Executive Director of Transportation. Nutrition services presented by Colleen Kohler, Executive Director of Nutrition Services. And Ed Services presented by Heidi Detman, Executive Director of Academics. Mr. Slife will present the transportation fiscal year 24 budget department requests. Mr. Slife.
Good afternoon. Do I tab through with this? For the, all right. So, so our transportation organizational chart, you guys have seen it, so I won't spend a lot of time on that right now. Our highlights, we continue to maintain our entire district fleet, and we have a work-based program that we actually host in-house, and the kids come in from Roosevelt and do bus washing, or prep buses and stuff. It ends up being a good experience. We're actually expanding that into more than once a year, so that they can come down quarterly. Onto the budget, our salaries and benefits, obviously, you're going up for the CBA agreements. Our purchase services, that is mostly our Sunrise contract, that is going up. The supplies line is going up, that's tires, fuel, oil, those types of pieces. Our non-capital equipment, or not equipment, non-capital is for our Phase 1, and some of Phase 2 for furniture, racking in our warehouse and stuff for parts. And then capital going down to 1.6 million. That, that 1.6 is for school buses next year, and then our other miscellaneous doesn't move at all. Onto our contracts, obviously, the Sunrise is the largest portion of that. The Sunrise contract's actually 9.9 million, as you can see on the bottom, and 1.2 of that goes to early childhood, and is all paid out grants for that. Obviously, diesel fuel, propane fuel, and TransFinder is our routing software. And then Zonar Systems continues, that dropped in price, because we bought a lot of equipment for the Zonar, and now we just have the flat fee, and the oil is going up just a little bit, and our tire service is actually staying the same. So our return on investment is helping make a difference in child, children's lives by safely delivering them to and from school. So I'm sure there are probably more questions than it takes me to get through all that.
Ms. Pearson?
Yeah, I, I just have a, a question in regards to the, and maybe this is to the, to the board and/or administration. Would we, at some point, reconsider the 1.5-mile radius for transportation, or that remain the same? That we leave any space in the budget for that additional transportation, should we decrease that, that mile radius?
So I, I'll go ahead. There's four schools that we're looking at currently to bust that mile and a half range, Ellis, Lewis-Lemon, Whitehead, and.
Constance Lane.
Constance Lane. And we're doing about a mile right now, instead of a mile and a half, at those four schools, getting, getting who we can without increasing the buses. The only way we would be able to do it is if we increase staff and also increased our fleet, so.
So there's an order of operations in terms of our commitments, and we are very committed to that work, Ms. Pearson. First step, though, we gave our faculty the opportunity to vote to extend the academic day for all students for 45 minutes. So we first are going to have to increase capacity for our elementary day to do that, and I think in that process, we will try to gain the most capacity we can through an outside partner while maintaining our full current driver force. So we hope that by adding extra support in that area, we will also be able to use, keep the existing driver force we have with some additional partnership, and actually do that. That will be our next priority to do. The first thing we want to be able to do is honor, and this, again, is ahead of the game to explain this, so, but prior to approving the budget, I believe this is gonna come forward as early as the end of the, potentially. forward as early as the end of the, potentially the last meeting of April, if I'm able to get board approval to move it forward because the, the companies that would do this work to help support our 45-minute longer elementary day, ended up with 19 schools so far that have passed that, which is way more than we expected. And so in turn, there's no way we'll be able to do that internally. So we may be able to have the best of both worlds potentially, but I don't want to over promise. First order will be to make sure that all of our students who suffered so much during the pandemic in those schools that voted to do that have the opportunity to have a 45-minute extended day. And then we will continue to expand service to those within a mile and a half pending board approval, assuming the board supports that as well. That can all, we can have a clear view of where we are on all of that, but it's going to have to happen in steps.
So I didn't hear a McIntosh school and I understand that there are some elementary kids riding the city bus. Have we addressed that at all?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I was not aware that we had any elementary school children riding the city bus.
Okay, so can we check in on them because that is the feedback that I received?
Yeah, we can look into that, definitely.
Thank you.
Ms. McCullough?
And so was this only for, for elementary schools? So what is the, what is the process or plan for the middle schools as far as that mile and a half mile?
Yeah, we would look at that for all potential schools. The first step when I said elementary is because elementary was the group we targeted to add 45 minutes to the day. But absolutely, middle schools would be under consideration as well. The limiting factor prior to, of course, board approval would be the number one limiting factor, but we know that there's some interest in the board. So bringing a proposal forward will just come down to us being able to have some combination of outside partners and our, growing our current driver force that will allow us to do that. But we'd be happy to add middle school if we can as well.
Okay, and I have an additional question. So you guys develop or gave parents an app called the Stop Finder app?
Yes.
That's available to follow the buses and everything. I have not had any success with that. I mean, it's just a good app, but you can't see the buses online, you can't do anything. It's just take it up by data. So I was wondering if you guys have a plan to flush that out more and make sure that it works or?
All the feedback I have gotten until today has been very positive, so.
So my, my school, my bus, my bus route just?
Maybe we can just help give you some.
If you, I can.
Got it all down.
I can get ahold of you and we can get that straightened out so it's working on your phone.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Can somebody find out how much our students, middle and high school are using the RMTD because they get to write it for free? I don't know if that has been helpful or not. I, I would agree with, with other board members who, I would love to see universal busing. If the kids aren't in their seats, then they are not learning, but I don't know how we can work that into a budget. So I know, I understand you're starting with the longer day and we'll see from there.
I think we have clear direction from the board to investigate strategies to expand driver capacity so we could at least put a financial proposal in front of the board and we will do so.
How many new buses will you be buying in this budget?
So in this one we're buying, there are 15 and that we used. They're two-year-old.
Okay, gently used?
Gently used, very, very gently compared to normal school districts.
And your fleet right now is 203 buses?
We are currently at 199. We have, we had one totaled, we were at 200. And we're, we're getting a couple buses that are still, I think they're 2016, but there's three of them. We're getting those from Harlem and then there'll be an additional 15. So we'll be up to 202 here next year.
What's your current average age of the?
Current average age is 4.68 as of today.
Another thing you can be happy about, Mr. Rollins, over a long tenure of the age of our bus fleet has come down significantly.
Why do people get rid of gently used buses? Do they just downsize? Do they go to privatization?
Um, there, there are a lot of two-year leases on school buses.
So there are leases and we're buying?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Thank you.
Is that capital all buses or is that something else too?
The 1.6 is all school buses.
The, well, not surprising really. My information's old. I used to, buses used to be like $84,000 each. This is working out to be like 106,000 for used buses.
Right. Brand new, they're about 120.
Really?
Yeah. So thanks to the EPA.
Yeah. All right, well, this is my last time to talk about school buses, so, you know, it's become kind of, kind of a joke, but when I got on the board 12 years ago, our bus fleet was old and they broke down a lot and our maintenance costs had gone way up. And we worked really hard to make sure that we bought buses and that we got the average age of the fleet down. I am pretty happy with that number of 4.68 years.
Do you remember what it was when you got on the board?
I don't. It was.
Yeah, it had to be close to 10.
I, I used to, when I drove my boys to preschool, I would text the then Chief of Operations telling him which buses were burning oil because you could see clouds of blue smoke following our buses. I haven't seen that in years. But buses are, are an easy thing to cut out of the budget when budgets start getting tight and/or when somebody's looking for some money. And so I'm just sort of suggesting to people, keep an eye on it going forward. You know, if you want to keep your average age at about where it is, you want to replace about 10% of your buses a year, every year, and just, just do that year after year. And, you know, when Mr. Phillips first gave me this budget, they were only buying five buses, I think, or no, 10 buses. Now it's up to 15, which is good. But 10% would be about 20, 20 buses. So just keep an eye on it going forward and if you, just keep in mind that if you let that average age go up, there are costs on the backend. The state of Illinois reimburses us for the cost of buses, but they don't reimburse it all at once. And that's the problem. We have to come up with the money and then they reimburse us as Mr. Brown here or Dr. Brown. How many years over, or do they do it?
Depends on how they negotiate, you know, like over a certain period of time where everybody captured it back, but I want to say somewhere between 100 and 150.
Yeah, so we don't get it all at once, but if you buy it, you will eventually get the money back from the state. So that's another reason to sort of bite the bullet and actually buy the buses. So that's my, that's the last time I officially get to talk about school buses. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Slife. Thanks. Ms. Kohler will represent the Nutrition and Services fiscal year 24 budget request.
I guess I get to advance this. All right, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Colleen Kohler. I am the Executive Director of Nutrition Services. This is my lovely admin team as well as, of course, the numerous folks that are our hourly staff out in the schools every day serving our students. I have a couple of slides of highlights, but I'm just going to touch on a few verbally. The first thing I want to touch on is our Titan software. This time last year, we were approving the contract for Titan, which was really great. And September 1 is when we finally launched it. So we have been implementing that all year long, menu planning, recipe development, inventory software, the list goes on. We also upgraded our point of sale, so our front end speaks to our back end. And of course, the kind of newest feature is the parent portal. So our parents, students, staff, even outside entities like medical professions that we work with that have students in our district are able to view our nutrition, our menus and our allergies by school, which has been a huge asset for us in a number of ways. The other thing I want to touch on is our extended campus program. So we have a couple of shifts, for lack of a better term, AM and PM shifts with our extended campus students at Jefferson and West. And newly, we were able to add Kennedy to that roster as well. The students come and help us out with prep work, with serving, with cleanup in our kitchens and they're a huge asset to us and we were really excited to be able to extend that program to Kennedy this year as well. On this page, in some meal participation year over year, I wanted to highlight how we're doing. September through January of last school year compared to this year, we had a slight difference in our service days. We had one less service day just based on how the calendar fell, but we were still seeing a huge increase in breakfast and lunch. We can attribute that to a number of things, but I do feel like Titan being the center of that has really impacted us because we've been able to offer a larger variety of meals. We've been able to offer a better meal mix of things and be confident that we are still USDA compliant. So we are seeing trends as we got out of February and March as well, where we're, year over year, our numbers continue to increase. Breakfast, we're seeing, you know, anywhere over 10% increase over last year and lunch we're seeing, you know, about 30%. So that's, or I'm sorry, vice versa, 30% and 10%. So that's really fantastic and we hope that that continues as we move forward. So our revenue slide, I want to touch on a couple of things here. NSLP stands for National School Lunch Program. So with our National School Lunch Program and our National School Breakfast Program, NSBP, all of our revenue is by the meal we serve. So we get a certain rate and for every meal we serve, we get that many dollars. So comparing, it's a little tricky because we don't have kind of where we're projecting to end the year up here, but we are projecting to end the fiscal year 23 above budget, which is great in case of revenue. And we are going to see about 12.5 million in our National School Lunch Program by the time the school year ends. We always want to predict that we're going to increase our participation through promotions, engagement, excitement with our students, meal mix, everything like that. So we are projecting about 12.9 for next school year. And same with breakfast. We do want to ensure that we continue to work through programs like breakfast in the classroom, building engagement, ensuring that breakfast is accessible for all our students. So we are ahead of budget there as well and that is why you see an increase for National School Breakfast Program. One thing I will note is that when we move into expenses, the salaries and benefits, there is a variance there. A large chunk of that is actually around our attendance bonuses. Last fiscal year, this time when we were working out the budget, we weren't sure if the attendance bonus would be something that would be offered this year, but we did offer it and we are, you know, paying that out. So we are anticipating that will be in effect next year as well and that's about $360,000 in attendance bonuses. So that's a large chunk of that variance you'll see there. The other area I wanted to point on is our supplies budget. We do have, this is food, disposables, all of the things that are kind of the core of our business. And if you've been to the grocery store lately, you've probably seen that food cost is way up. So we're experiencing that as well. We were fortunate this school year to actually receive some supply chain assistance of about $896,000. It was kind of a USDA lump sum that was given to us based on our enrollment, so that did help us out this year. But we did make this kind of back in the January era, only had a couple of months under our belt. At that time, I was projecting we'd be at about 5.9 million for our food cost, which was over budget, but now that we have a couple more months under our belt, it's looking like we're projecting more about 5.1 million. So this variance isn't quite as scary as it may look. It's about $800,000 less than what you see on the screen today. And we'll continue to monitor those numbers and tweak those as we get closer to the end of the year and the final budget is approved. But food cost is a little tricky to monitor right now as it, you know, ebbs and flows. The other thing I will mention about our non-capital and capital expenditures is we have a million dollars, you know, budgeted in there on purpose. We do have a fund balance that is a surplus right now and it exceeds the three-month expense maximum that we're supposed to have in our budget per USDA. So the deficit you see is purposeful because we do need to spend money on equipment and furniture like cafeteria tables to maintain our kitchens and serve our students to the best of our ability. So that is our expenses summary. And moving into our contracts, I just want to highlight a couple of things that are pretty consistent from last year, but Alpha Baking is a little deceiving. I just wanted to let you know about that. We actually still do purchase fresh bread from Alpha Baking. Instead of having a direct contract with them, we actually work through our HPS co-op and use the contract that they have with them. So that is a slight change, but we still do purchase through Alpha. And then looking at Airmark uniforms, we did discontinue that contract. It wasn't serving us super well, so we actually just outright bought aprons for our team and then we are using disposable wipers instead of the linens that they provided for us. So that is no longer a contract that we have. And for us in Nutrition Services, our return on investment is ensuring that we have proper nutrition for our students so they can have academic success and of course, that they can work and play successfully while they're at school. So any questions I can answer for you tonight?
Ms. Stanford?
I was told that we cannot do remote learning on snow days because we have to provide meals for our students. Has that been addressed? Will we be able to do that next year?
I think I can weigh in on that. This is something that we have, are going to be working closely with our nutrition team as well as our Ed Services team to ensure that we can start the year day one with a plan in place. And Ms. Kohler has some, I think, really good ideas about how we can do that pragmatically. One thing we've talked about as an example would be some, having kind of a store of grab and go kits that don't go, don't go bad on us too quickly, kind of maybe refreshing. I think you mentioned maybe monthly if needed.
Yeah, if we keep them frozen, it's something that will last quarterly probably for us and then if we need to use it, great. If we don't, we'll use it on our main menu and then we can replenish.
So the idea would be that if a, a weather event is coming up or an anticipated weather event would come, was coming, we would start building processes to ensure that electronic devices as well as meals would go home with the students in anticipation of a potential weather event. And in doing so, we would avoid students having to then go back out to pick up food. That would be the idea. If for whatever reason, the weather event was less nasty than anticipated and we have school, I think we would all feel great knowing that we gave some extra nutritional benefit to our students. So I think that is the general direction the plan is heading, but still some refinement needed prior to next year. But really impressed with the early work that Ms. Kohler and her team have done on this.
And there you have it. Anything else?
Ms. McCulloch?
Your extended campus, you said you, the one that you're now bringing into Kennedy? What program is that associated with? What group of students?
It's with our transition students that are working and learning downstairs. So we have three to four students in each kind of shift at each of those schools I mentioned. Yeah.
I just had a really, just a high level question on the budget. So the budgeted revenue for next year is 16.6 million and the budgeted expenditures is 18.9 million, which is a $2.3 million deficit.
Correct. So what I mentioned is that on this line item of supplies, because I made this back in January when we initially started doing our budgets, I had projected a little bit higher of a food cost where we would end the school year. And then I always use my projections of this year to obviously budget for next year. So I had gone a little high on that based on the current trends of our food cost. So what I'm saying now is that we see about an $800,000 savings with two more months under our belt. So that number is a little bit less drastic, but yes, the, the deficit remains. It's not quite as much as you mentioned now with that kind of revision around food costs, but we are doing that purposefully with those capital and capital, non-capital and capital budgets because, like I said, we have a surplus, we do need to spend it.
So and this gets to that fund accounting. So we have a surplus in the, in the Nutrition Services and we have to send, spend that, but then are we going to be passing a balanced budget? Because I'm looking at Dr. Brown.
So really what happens is you, we're getting to a point where we do have to do some planned capital expenditure. So, you know, with capital lines and things like that, like Colleen was talking about. talking about, you know, we have such a surplus in the Nutrition Services budget right now that we actually got our hands wrapped by the USDA because we're accumulating too much money in there. So what they've said is, look, you can't make money off the Food Services Program. You can only really keep on hand, you know, three months worth of operating cash. We need to borrow and there's such a debt right now. So what they've said is you need to start plowing some of that money back in to your facility. The only way that we can do that, obviously, is to deficit spend. This is within what's called an enterprise fund, within fund management, which is the overall education fund. Right now, we have a surplus budget in there, which we're not supposed to do on the Food Services side of things. So, you know, the only way to chip away at this is we do have to run a deficit, you know, to be able to spend down those accumulated balances. But we will do on, like the capital projects one, you know, when we have, have targeted money, then we're going to spend some of the money that we've kept away. We actually have a deficit, you know, that we're playing for on both sides of things. So from an operating point of view, we are probably not, when it comes right down to, by the time we get done with more colony, I think we'll be very close to an operating budget that is balanced. But we will have deficits spending because we will be spending down surpluses over the cumulative areas.
And I'm fine with that. And, but the state doesn't ding us for the capital deficits, the capital expenditures. Does the state ding us at all for this sort of deficit? Like, or is this the type of deficit that they're not gonna, they're not gonna care about?
They're not gonna think too much until we really get out of the way and put, like, down the structure of the deficit. You know, the additional money that we've been giving in from, like, the USDA is really plugging the hole. We can't budget it from that on the revenue side because we don't know for the year whether they're going to spend that extra money because of higher costs and things like that. They've also been manipulating the reimbursement rates. They actually jack them up when costs have actually gone higher too, and we've seen dreadful money come in from that too. So it's hard on the revenue side. We'll probably blow on that, I would say, though.
From fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23, our reimbursement for breakfast went up nine cents, but our lunch reimbursement went down 13 cents. So I'm not sure why they did that. But when we do our budget for the revenue, we do plan that it would at least stay stagnant. So I certainly don't anticipate getting more money. But if they do, then it's an added bonus.
The USDA will probably sometime during the month of April or May publish our reimbursement rates for meals for next year. And so we'll be able to come much closer in production of revenue too.
All right, thanks. Ms. McCulloch?
So the National School Lunch and Breakfast Programs, how much longer will they be paying for all of our students for their food? Is there any end?
Well, that is the program that we're signed up for.
And right now, it's actually our department. So, you know, that's going to be a big point of negotiation coming up, you know, in this next budget because it's the largest single line item, you know, in the USDA budget. And so this gets wrapped up into politics with party and everything else on whether it's going to continue and how it's going to be funded. You know, there's a push right now to make, you know, meals available to all kids, no matter where they're at, which would substantially increase, you know, the budget for, you know, the USDA. So I don't, I think at this point, you know, nobody thinks the program's going to go away. If you're going with exactly right about now, I can't really tell you at this point. But this wouldn't be a political hot potato come summer or fall, I would tell you that.
But weren't there schools that were dropped off of it? I mean, wasn't there like this tenure span?
Schools drop off, they choose to drop.
Yeah. Choose to.
Yeah. Right now, I can't speak to the future or what gets passed, but right now, RPS is a part of the National School Lunch Program, a part of the National School Breakfast Program, and we are also CEP, Community Eligible Provision, which means all of our students get free breakfast and lunch. Anything else I can answer tonight?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Stetman will present the Ed Services fiscal year '24 department budget requests.
Anybody need to stand up and stretch for a minute? Intermission, maybe? I'll move as quickly as I can here and also make sure that we can answer your questions. All right, I lead the Ed Services Division. We are a division made up of multiple departments, and you can see that overview here. We are supported by Executive Assistant Cindy Marsh. We include bilingual services led by Dr. Misael Nascimento. We include college and career readiness led by Bridget French. Curriculum, I can't, I can't even read it. Curriculum led by Mr. Ben Epperson. Early childhood led by Kim Nelson. Improvement and innovation led by Travis Wolf. And student services, which includes both discipline and special education led by Jennifer Lawrence. You can take a deeper dive into each of their org charts if you'd like. But on a high level, both our bilingual and our early childhood departments include not only curriculum and programming, but also screening and placement, data tracking, and family support services as well. So you can take a deeper look at our org charts here. You can see that we are a mighty division, and we cover all children prenatal through 12th grade, all of our programming from our home visiting through our college and career academies. So essentially, our job is to ensure that we have equal access and opportunity for all students into our core and supplemental programming. Some highlights from the curriculum department. Our curriculum department has really led the way in moving us as a district from paper and print resources into a sustainable digital footprint in our instruction. We've also put a focus on tier-one instruction through the implementation of the standards of practice, and then we provide ongoing professional learning for all of those shifts. College and career readiness has a focus on increasing work-based learning experiences for our students, scaling dual credit, and providing professional learning for staff in all of those endeavors. Early childhood, I'm going to pause here for just a moment because our early childhood department had an incredible bounce back from COVID. This was the age that was primarily impacted. We were under-enrolled during COVID by more than 1,000 students. And today, we are up and fully enrolled and maintained our gold circle of quality in all of our preschool programs. Plus, we continued home visiting even during the pandemic through virtual and porch visits. So I wanted to pause and really applaud the work of this team because that is an incredible bounce back. Special education, we are in full compliance. We met compliance in all indicators, and that is the first time that I can report that in my tenure as the Executive Director of Academics. I'm very proud of that work. Additionally, one thing we thought you would find noteworthy would be the transition students that we have in our lower level here, the extended campus career students. They are employed, and they are making a meaningful contribution to our community. They are actually preparing all of the packets for Illinois Basics and developmentally appropriate toys that are being delivered to newborns at Crusader and UW Health through the Alignment Rockford Ready-to-Learn Initiative. And they feel incredibly honored to be a part of that system and to contribute to the community in that way. Student services, we had, last year, our highlight was improving and totally revising the student code of conduct. This year, you heard about the inclusion of the parent advisory committee, the ongoing training, and a reduction in out-of-school suspension. This is another incredible lift over the last two years from this team. Bilingual, we've added the seal of biliteracy as an opportunity for our students. It is now given in 16 languages, with eight new languages having been added. We also are following suit with the standards of practice in K-2 Spanish TBE, doing classroom observations to support tier-one instruction. This will also be our second year of extending the school year for TBE students through a reading summer school program. And we also are piloting a new translation device, which allows a parent to come to our welcome center and in any language be able to engage in dialogue immediately. It's very slick. Innovation and improvement, we continue to serve students in our Innovation and Improvement Department in our summer programming. 3,152 students were served last summer, and that's something to be applauded. It is unique in our region. We also continue to support 21st Century and 20 Sites, support through Title I. And then also, you just experience the fruits of their labor in the Charter Renewal Framework and Accountability System at our last committee of the whole. Overall, here's the bottom line in our budget. You can see that we are down overall without grants by $521,000. That comes primarily from the supplies line, and that is really going in with a scalpel and ensuring that our supplies are where they need to be. There are some that were moved to school budgets, some that we've reduced. But overall, that's our biggest reduction. When you add in grants, you can see that there's actually a $15 million increase. I did clarify this point, Mr. Rollins, after our preview. I missed the word "construction" in that line. So this line total does not include ARP-ESR construction, but it does include ARP-ESR learning loss, which again was 20% of that total award, and finances estimating approximately 50% of those dollars to have been spent. I'm going to go through our contracts rather quickly, and if you have questions at the end, please let me know, but I'll just sort of hit the highlights. We are a very contract-heavy division because we have all of the contracts for all of our instructional resources, our digital tools, our therapeutic day placements, et cetera. So I will sort of try to hit the highlights here as we go. I wanted to make sure that I pointed out on this slide that we are not reducing our professional learning support for Reading Horizons. We are simply using our banked hours over the many years we've had this contract to fully fund the professional learning that we need this upcoming year. Excuse me. $325,000 here for Curriculum Associates is the Ready Teacher Toolbox instructional adoption that is coming in the preview of Consent Agenda and the Performance Monitoring Committee. We are adding here $175,000 from Curriculum and Associates to support Ready Teacher Toolbox. We are also upcoming in FY '24, you'll see an adoption for K-12 art resources from the Art of University, Art of Education University, pardon me. And then we made a switch from Newzella to Gale. Gale is less expensive and a higher-quality product, according to our curriculum team. You can sort and filter by standard much more efficiently, and it has higher-quality text. These are pretty standard items here. I'll kind of breeze through these two slides. And then we come to the bottom line here with the curriculum. All of the additions and subtractions yield a $48,000 reduction. These are Fund 18 or grant-funded contracts, and they include Star Renaissance and Panorama. College and career readiness, these are pretty standard items. We're the first two slides. The story really is in the third slide. We continue to support scaling of dual credit, and in this fall, we'll be adding a biology cohort, and our English Lit Masters will wrap up. We'll be ready to offer, then, those English dual-credit courses on our campus. We are also adding two programs, I'm sorry, one program. That is the Career Running Start Program through Rock Valley College. Early childhood, we received word this year that our early childhood grant will be level-funded for two more years. So you will not see very many changes in our early childhood contracts. Sunrise, you can see a small reduction here. Did I skip one? No, I did not. Here's in the Fund 18. You can see the larger reduction in sunrise here. Every year, this is just an estimate, and we kind of pull back on transportation, which is not required for us to provide, depending on the total cost of salary and benefits around May of every year. So this is our best working estimate moving forward into FY '24. We also include, and I'll draw your attention to, our commitment through the ARP-ESR dollars that provides door-to-door transportation for students through ALC, now called EverDriven. Circles of Learning, this cost is primarily to make up for the cost, the increase in salary and benefits in the nine staff that it takes to run the program at Circles of Learning. Overall, reduction of $200,000. Special education, Fund 17. Therapeutic Day is relatively stable at about $7.3 million. Of course, we are required to fund student placements and therapeutic day, and that is a moving target depending on student needs. So this is our estimate, about $7.3 million. We did have an increase of 60 therapeutic day placements since coming back from COVID, which is a large increase. The Ombudsman Program, it's a program that has sunset. They did not have the staff to run it last year, and so it's been removed from the budget. Our biggest increase here is in Maxim. We use Maxim to fill vacancies for paraprofessionals. You can see, we've had a hard time ever since COVID and over the last two years in filling some of our vacancies. So there's an increase there, with a bottom line increase of $508,000 in our Fund 17 Special Education. Fund 18 Special Education, sorry, checking with my notes. I got ahead of myself. Sorry, I'm missing one. No, I'm not. Fund 18 Special Education, there really wasn't much change here. But I did want to just draw your attention to an item of note, which would be the diabetic snacks. That's something new. This gives our nurses a way to scan and charge snacks back to this account whenever they have a student who needs an instant snack, who's in diabetic episode. Student Services, the big headline here is Youth Service Network. We are actually collapsing our $537,000 contract with YSN, but we are not reducing our Behavior Intervention Specialists. This is the portion of the contract that is dedicated to BISs or Behavior Intervention Specialists. And instead, we're pulling them in as RPS employees. So this is reduced as a purchase service, but it will hit the school budgets. Bilingual is very steady. There is very little change in our bilingual contracts. You can see just an overall $6,000 change. And improvement and innovation is flat overall, with no change whatsoever. Same with the Charter Authorizing Unit with the School Works contract. Library Services, we always see slight increases, and this is due to just the annual fee going up for some of our largest databases that we use in every library. So the return on investment, of course, as always, is dynamic coordinated services to schools prenatal through 12th grade, and an aligned educational infrastructure to serve all students and advance equitable access to high-quality programs and opportunities. And I will take any questions that you have.
Ms. McCulloch?
So at our last board meeting, we elevated Ms. Lawrence to a cabinet-level position. Would she not then have her own department under her with Special Ed and Student Services? And why is it still under yours?
Excellent question. Our budget season is very long, and I'm at the tail end of this. We do all of our budget preparation beginning in January, but I'll hand it over to Dr. Jarrett.
Yeah, just, we kept it as, because that was just approved last week. So we'd be, it has been prepared in coordination with Ms. Lawrence. Nothing will change. So we just determined to bring it forward. But we'd be happy to bring that back separately if the board would prefer.
Well, your org chart will change, will it not?
The org chart, the org chart will change.
And this, we don't approve this till September, so.
Yes. Prior to final board approval of the whole, when we put that back together, there will be multiple org chart suggestions, and we'll bring all of those together, including that one. That was the thought, rather than bring it back in pieces as it comes along. So, good question.
So if we have early childhood with that ALC, using our ARP-ESR funds, what's going to happen after they're gone next year? How are we going to transport all those students you're transporting now?
Excellent question. So we are keeping detailed records on student attendance and the impact of being able to transport students door-to-door. It's an incredibly costly solution. What we'd like to do, then, is bring that forward back to the board to ask, is early childhood transportation something that the board would like to fund? And that is a board governance decision. But we're thankful for the opportunity with ARP-ESR to provide this in the interim.
Okay. And then, my last question's Ombudsman. I saw that you got rid of the night school piece. That was the extra. But you still have them down for 885. There's no change on that. They have not been filling their seats. They've been running it, you know, I've been checking the last couple of months, and they're still at, we're going to pay for 150 again, and yet we're only running at about 100. So how are we going to continue to, because we pay them whether the students are there or not?
Correct. So this will be Ms. Lawrence's responsibility. So I'll hand over to her to respond to your question.
We have one year left on the Ombudsman contract, and we're currently sitting at 142 out of 150 seats filled with applications in process. So we'll be at 150 filled seats.
So last week, when I talked to them, they were at 103. So somehow, we got 40 students in. So that's great. So somehow, we got 40 students in, so that's great.
They're constantly in the queue.
So the YSN piece as well, so that contract did end or is ending this year or whatever, because we're absorbing those into our system, the BISs, right?
Correct. We'll only be working with YSN on truancy.
And we will continue that?
We will continue truancy, yes, collaboratively with them, so they'll work with us in the applications for truancy.
Any other, oh, Mr. Siegel?
Just real quickly, what motivated you to bring the BIS roles in-house?
That's a great question. Really just working with Amy Gannon and her team, so she's the Executive Director of MTSS, trying to make sure that we're coordinated across our system in terms of supports for our students, which includes training. And so we've been having kind of some difficulty coordinating training with an outside agency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ed Services? All right, thank you very much. The following items will be presented on the Consent Agenda for April, for the April 11th, 2022 Board Meeting. A, Patriot's Gateway, ARP-ESR, Patriot's Gateway Community Center will expand its summer program to include a greater focus on addressing learning loss and providing academic support to students not at grade level in math or reading. The community center will also expand its middle school program to provide summer programming to more students. It will also offer full-day programming, including group tutoring sessions, SEL workshops, and academic enrichment projects. B, Community Life Center, ARP-ESR. Community Life Center of Rockford is based in the southwest corridor of Rockford and is open to serving any student that attends RPS 205. Their program will provide after-school programming, mentoring programs for secondary students that include college tours and summer camp for 2023. The organization will provide wraparound services for students that include counseling, academic tutoring, and additional education programming in subjects like art, physical education, and STEM. The program will service 105 students weekly after school, 50 students in the mentoring program, and 150 students during their summer program. C, project management training for district leadership. The district would develop and enhance project management skills for 14 district leaders through a five-day certified project management training and certification course facilitated by Project Management Leadership Group. Are there any planning consent agenda items the board wishes to have pulled for additional discussion? Mrs. McCollough?
Pulled, I just want to ask, make sure. It says so in the contract, but Patriot's Gateway will only serve our students, correct?
Yes.
They have to be our students, okay. Thank you. I mean, it's clear on the community life in the conversation, but.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Rollins, there was one thing I wanted to have pulled if I could.
Sure.
And I think it's item F because my agenda looks all weird. Yeah, the Evanson Skokie Therapeutic Day School.
That's performance and monitoring.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My bad.
Yeah, I've already got a record-length committee report, so don't make it longer. Anybody else have anything from my committee?
No, sir.
If not, that completes the report for the Planning and Development Committee.
Thank you. One more of those to go, right? Ms. Stanford, performance and monitoring portion of the meeting, please.
Okay, so we have no formal reports for tonight's performance monitoring committee. However, we do have a substantial list of consent agenda items. We've grouped these by like item, and we'll provide a brief summary of each group. So Items A through E are standard items. Items F and G are therapeutic day school placements. As a reminder, we are required to serve students in therapeutic day settings when the IEP determines it's the more appropriate placement. Items H and I are rental agreements to support student activities sponsored by the College and Career Readiness Department. Item H is an agreement with RVC to host the annual medical terminology quiz bowl event. Item I is an agreement with Rockford University to rent space for the business competition for students enrolled in Virtual Enterprise International. You can learn more about each event in the executive summary on Board Docs. Item J is an agreement with the Rockford Park District to provide caregivers and their children enrolled in home visiting or preschool a chance to play and learn together during an event at Lockwood Park. Items K and L are instructional resource adoptions. Both of these instructional resources have been recommended for adoption by unanimous vote from Instructional Council. Item K is CKLA, Camino by Amplify. This resource will support all students grades K through 5 as the district's core literacy resource. The board has been updated weekly on this resource adoption process, and these updates will continue throughout the field test. Ready Teacher Toolbox is an instructional resource to support K through 8 math. It is primarily a suite of performance tasks aligned to our core curriculum. Both resources were vetted and selected through our curriculum leadership team process, which is governed through Instructional Council. Items M and R are service contracts to support individual schools, Cherry Valley Elementary and Jefferson High School. Items N through T are service contracts to support essential learning institutes this summer for all RPS educators. In Friday's board update, the board received an overview of our approach to professional learning this summer through a four-day institute concept. Registration will begin after April 21st. Item U is an RFP for banking services. Item V has been pulled by the administration. Items W and X are open bids. Items Y and Z are recurring contracts for roof replats replacements, and you can learn more about those in the executive summaries. Items AA and BB are in process, but will support summer essential learning institutes. Items CC, DD, and EE are bids, and the opening dates are listed for your information in Board Docs. Are there any comments or questions on any of these consent items? Mr. Siegel?
Yes, thank you. Letter F, the Evanson Skokie SD65 Therapeutic Day School. In reading the executive summary, they use students in both the singular and the plural. I'm trying to figure out how many students were going to be served by this particular I'd read the executive summary too, but it won't come up on my device.
Sorry, there's one student that's going to be served at that school.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of my thought. The, and actually, that was it for that one. What letter was the new core literacy curriculum? Thank you. Could you help me understand the relationship that this has with Reading Horizons, because they do overlap a lot of the same years?
You bet. Reading Horizons is where we're teaching kids how to read. We're teaching them phonics, symphonemic awareness, and how to decode. CKLA slash Camino by Amplify is a core literacy resource. So in K-1, 2, it's focused on read alouds, and it's about building students' core knowledge and giving them text, rich text, and the ability to write in response to text. So it's everything outside of Reading Horizons. Annie Pfeiffer, our Dean of Curriculum, has often shown the board Scarborough's rope, and she's talked about the bottom strands and the top strands. Reading Horizons is the bottom, and CKLA is the top. Vocabulary, rich text, literature, informational text, et cetera.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? That will conclude our report.
Thank you. Governance will be quick. We have board policy change. It's to provide clarity. The administration is asking to revise the policy so that we add the district's legal name as Board of Education of the Rockford Public Schools, District 205, Winnebago and Boone Counties, which is necessary for some contracts and the like. Are there any questions about that? Okay. And preview of consent items, we have meeting minutes. The amendment for the Rockford Public Schools is 11B for the intergovernmental agreement with the Park District, and that is to allow the public to utilize Jefferson Courts while Guilford Courts are under construction or refurbishment this summer. Any questions? And then, of course, contract purchase orders and freedom of information. Any questions about any of those? Seeing none, I'd ask if we have any speakers? Seeing none. We'll move on to petition, or I'm sorry, to any item additions from school board members? All right, no further comments or agenda recommendations, then I will take a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. We adjourn today.